Because they are the ones that design it and I approve the design.
Okay.
Not exactly what.
Okay, can we start with one of your witnesses then?
Um, I will call Mr. Sanders.
Okay, Mr. Sanders, I have to place you under oath. Can you say something so I could see that you're there? Mr. Sanders, are you here?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, hi, if you please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, Chris Sanders, thirty-four Clinton Street, Newark, New Jersey, zero seven one zero two.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Mr. Sanders, you want to proceed?
Yes, Roderick. Um, is actually my partner, Roderick, um, is also a part of the, the firm. And I was gonna have him present. So, okay with the?
Yeah, he'll have to get sworn in and just tell us his credentials.
Okay.
Okay. Can it, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay.
Mr. Roderick, if you'll, um, please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name and your address for the record.
My name is Roderick Watkins, last name W A T K I N S. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm in good standings and I've appeared on multiple planning boards and zoning boards throughout the state.
Thank you.
Uh, please proceed. Would you like to tell us a little bit about the project?
Sure, um, it's a, uh, existing two-family residence located on Cuzo Street. I don't know if you, everyone has access to the plans that we provided, but I'm gonna start off on drawing number C one. Where is the site plan and it has a picture of the front Cuzo Street elevation, so you can get a reference to, uh, what the building looks like and the site.
Okay.
Cur- currently, there is a existing garage that is located off Cuzo Street and you can see in the photograph, there's three parking, three cars in, in that's location and you could fit four currently now. What the client plans to do is to turn this two-family house into a three-family residence, which basically means that they're gonna renovate the first floor into a legal residence. As you could see in the site plan, we're taking the existing grass area, if you look at the front elevation off to the left and convert that into two additional parking spaces by creating additional concrete slab, basically adding more parking spaces to the site. They are, we are also providing a, an enclosed trash receptacle area that's gonna be enclosed by a fence and a gate with locks. And everything else on the site is basically saying the same. If you turn to drawing A one, on this drawing, we are showing the existing conditions as they are now. Immediately to the left is the ground floor, floor plan, which currently shows a two-car garage located on the lower portion of that plan. There's an existing door that takes you from that garage area into the apartment area that has two bath, two bedrooms, one bathroom and an open area currently, um, that's basically open right now. There's a second means of egress that takes you up to a stair tower that takes you immediately outside through the backyard. To, to the right of that is the existing second floor. So, if you look at the bottom of the lot where you were at before with the part, with the, uh, four, three parking spaces, there's a main entrance that takes you from the ground level, you go up steps and you have to the left, a door entrance that takes you into the second floor apartment. And then to the right, there's a separate entrance that takes you upstairs to the third floor apartment. These apartments are currently legal and they're the two apartments that are currently on file for this building. So, there's minimal work occurring in here, in this area, in these two areas. Most of the work, or a majority of the work will be on the site and the ground floor. So, if you go to the drawing A two, this drawing basically describes the renovation which we're gonna be doing on the first floor. The plant to the left, if you look at the lower portion of that floor plan, that's currently where the existing parking garage is located now. What we're going to do is convert that parking garage into additional living space for the proposed apartment. We are providing a new living room area located to the left, a new main entrance door that takes you into this apartment by taking the existing garage door off and infilling it with windows and a new door entrance. So, as you can see, you're gonna be able to enter into that new apartment area. To the right, there's closets coming into the main entrance. As you continue to go up the page, there's an opening that allows you to go into the living space, the living room area. Continuing up that same corridor, if you go to the right, we have a relocated sink that we're putting in that enclosed area with a washer and dryer for that unit. As you proceed past the door through that corridor going up on the plan, to the right of that is got a new bathroom that we're creating with a shower. Now, immediately to the left, entering it through that same doorway, there's the existing bedroom, but we are also adding in a new closet into that bedroom space. From that bedroom, you could connect to a new, well, the existing bathroom that was always on that floor. If you proceed up through that same bathroom, you go into the second bad bedroom that was already existing and we're just basically providing new ancillary areas to that existing apartment layout. Once you proceed out of that bedroom, you come into a new kitchenette and dining space that we've created as part of this renovation work. So, now with this plan and renovation, we've created an additional toilet, bathroom with a shower, a new kitchenette, a new living room space and provided two separate means of egress throughout that space. And we're providing new additional electrical wiring for additional outlets, new lighting. There's a new egress light on the exterior as required by code for egress. And also, we're maintaining code by providing two means of egress in that space. And if you go to plan P one, this is our plumbing and mechanical plan. And we're just basically showing you the additional hot water heater and boiler that we're gonna be adding into that first floor apartment area that will be dedicated to serve that space. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. I, I had a question. The, the, uh, the two additional parking spots, where, where are they gonna be located? To the right of the stairs or?
If you look at, uh, drawing C one.
Right.
They are to the right of the building. I guess located northeast, north, northwest, actually.
I'm sorry, how large is that space? Was it sixteen feet?
Yes, their, their spaces are eight by twenty.
More than enough.
They're going to the right of the stairs, to the right of the stairs, the space?
If, if, to the left, if you're looking at the, that the building from Cuzo Street.
The left side of the house, right?
What's that?
On the left side of the existing house.
Yes. If you see, if, there's, there's like a shaded box to the right of the site plan. That's now grass and we're converting that into new sidewalk parking spaces.
Okay.
What's, what surrounds this buil- this house? Is this all, are they all apartment buildings surrounding it?
There's one apartment building, yes.
Every side of it looks like it's surrounded by it. Alright.
How long, how long does this current owner own this property?
Twenty years.
So, why did they have an illegal apartment in the basement all that time?
They, it was, it was a non-used, uh, illegal space. I think that was, was, uh, somebody tried to slide by before she got the property. And, uh, you know, once she's, she hasn't, hasn't used it in twenty years and now that she's retiring and she wants to be in this beautiful community, she wants to up, you know, make it, bring it to, you know, make it legal.
Got you. Alright.
Alright, I have a few questions about it. Um, layout's a little bit awkward. I'm not sure I like that the utilities are centered inside of the apartment. I mean, whether or not she's gonna live there, eventually somebody's gonna, a tenant is gonna have to be bothered every single time for every single unit to access all the boilers and the hot water heaters. So, that, I don't know if there's anything you do about that to rearrange the unit itself. The other thing I kind of think there should be is a little bit more storage space for each of these units. I mean, they're, they're decent sized units, every single one of them, and the basement units or the ground floor unit is a large unit as well. So, I mean, these people may have a lot of stuff and there's no storage at all in the entire house. Um, one other thing is to build on the fact that there's gonna be a lot of people in here, that there's only one washer and dryer. You know, I, I think if this, I think there should be at least two, if not three.
That's only on that unit. There's one on?
I didn't see them anywhere else.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's no washer and dryers in the other units. This is only for landlord's, uh, space. And she, you know, she's gonna be the one that's, uh, addressing any repairs to any boilers. So, it's, it's good that she's right in the prox- the proximity of those existing boilers for the other units.
I agree with you now, for now, I mean, but this unit's gonna be there forever. So, you kind of wanna do it right. So, whether or not she's gonna be here for one year, ten years, twenty years, and twenty years, and she goes, somebody else is gonna move in and that's going to become a problem either way. So, I think maybe you need to rearrange things a little bit, maybe change the way you access the back of the house and make maybe the back of the house uh, a different space. I don't know, but, uh, definitely something has to be done. I don't know so much about that, but the washer and dryers and the storage, I think you really should provide for these tenants to make it a desirable place for people to live now and into the future.
Well, I mean, as far as relocating the boilers, I know that's gonna be a exorbitant amount of money. So, I'm not sure if, if the client can afford relocating those boilers. I, I, I mean, I, I definitely, in a perfect world, you know, that would be a beautiful thing to do. But as far as they're, they're there right now, I don't know if you understand, if you, um, know as far as relocating boilers and all the plumbing that's gonna have to happen and all the ceilings that are gonna have to be ripped out to relocate that, those boilers, but it's, it's, it's a lot of money.
Well, what if you changed the layout of the back of the house? There's an entrance through the back that you currently use now as, I guess, a kitchen? Or a sitting area? I mean, maybe turn that into a space that directly accesses them and maybe either some storage and or washer and dryer units for the other tenants. Cause I see that they have access through the back stairs as well. And you could put, at, like I said, at least two, I think you need, you need two pairs in, in that, in that house for all those, all those apartments.
Washing, are you mean washer and dryers on the bottom floor?
Yeah, I don't see space for them on the other floors.
Yeah, cause it, right now, we do not offer washer and dryers in any of the other apartments. So, and that's a lu- you know, that's a luxury that, that, uh, some, some apartments are affording tenants, but we don't offer that here. So, I mean, I, I'd, I'd hate to put that, that financial, you know, burden on the, on the, on the landlord. She just wants to, to live there. If there's another person that wants to buy the property, they can upgrade it to putting up, um, washer and dryers in every, every apartment.
I mean, we grant this, we grant a lot of extra value to her, you know, especially if she does choose to rent it. Two-bedroom apartments go for a lot of money. So, we're letting her maximize her value on this piece of property right here. I think she should do something to make it more desirable, the property.
I have a question through the chair, or two, two, through the chair to Mr. DiLorenzo.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, so, from a, from a safety perspective, I know with the, uh, the new, when you're going from two to three, you, we need to adhere to the ordinances, right? So, does this three-family now, I'm gonna call it three-family, need sprinklers?
Uh, when he comes in with the hard plans, we have to review it. He may need it. Depends on the, the size of the building and the exits and independent exits or not. So, we gotta see it when he comes in. These aren't, these are in CD drawings for me to review as a building official. I don't do that until this is good, it's approved.
Oh.
He may, he may need that, he may not, but that's gonna be determined when he comes in.
Gotcha. And then as far as parking, do, do, do the new requirements, does this, will this adhere to the new requirements for parking?
Yeah, he meets it, he meets it all anyway, the parking. He would have, it'd be six, so, and he had some existing bedrooms that were there, so.
Yeah, okay. So, I thought, I thought, I thought I saw, there's only six bedrooms?
Well, I think there's, there were six bedrooms there, right? Cause three and three, and then so they were existing when it was built.
Right. Oh, I thought, I thought you have to go back to, to the new ordinances when you changed it.
Well, he was got approved for that already. So, then he has, but he's still gonna meet the six, cause he has six, six, eight bedrooms.
Eight bedrooms.
It's eight bedrooms.
Eight bedrooms, three, three on the second, three on the third and two on the first.
Right. So, that's the only reason why I questioned that.
In a new one?
No, he was on the old, he was on the old ordinance. He was on the zero point five.
I understand that, but when, when, when they're up, when anybody upgrades, don't they have to go back in retrofit to the new ordinance or no?
No, cause he had it in before, he had the application before the zone change, the two years change, you know what I mean? Yeah, that's.
Sorry, okay, I didn't know that.
He would change it back and forth a couple of times, so.
Bedrooms, they, they were there already. I mean, it doesn't, it's not changing the number of bedrooms in this house.
Right, they were there, the, the two on the bottom were newer, the other ones were approved when they built the house.
I think it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, right?
The, the bedrooms would be, yes.
Any other board members have questions for this witness?
I, I'm just gonna, I just wanna follow up on a question to, to Mr. DiLorenzo again. So, Mr. DiLorenzo, if it did after, after looking into it, cause I, I heard the gentleman say something about finances, if it does require, um, sprinklers and it comes back, how does that work? If approved and requires sprinklers and then can't, you know, they?
Then he can't, then he can't get it, then he can't get a permit.
Okay, okay, and then it just falls.
Yeah, yeah, the, the state doesn't say, oh, cause he doesn't have money, you know, you know, you know what I mean? It's, we don't, we don't look at it that way.
No, no, and they're aware of that. Okay.
Yeah, they'll, the architect knows, so.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Rosanna, you make a good point. If, 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 if Mr. Band's suggestions couldn't be reached because the, the applicant doesn't have money, how are they gonna sprinkler a three-family building? And if they have the money to sprinkler the building, then maybe we should insist on some of those other changes.
Yeah, but right now, you don't even know if it's required.
And again, I, I wasn't really telling him to move the, the units. I was telling him to provide access to the back to easily, to better get to them. This way, they don't have to be moved. He's gonna have to change the apartment itself around a little bit, the layout that they have, maybe even shrink it. Um, but it will provide access through a separate entrance directly to them, so it doesn't affect any of the tenants ever. Same with the washer and dryer, what I think they should each have, you know?
We actually asked for like an alternate plan and have this like come back to us? Could we do that?
Now, now washer and dryers, you know, I'm typing something, but I'm not expert in. But I know as far as rental units, if you, if you give them a washer and dryer, that's, that's for the tenant's benefit, cause he can ask for more money, but if he decides that he doesn't want to give them, that they pay less rent. So, I'm, I'm not sure.
Through the back, if they don't wanna, if they don't wanna do it, then fine, but the hookups are, the access are there. That's the difference. I mean, if you don't provide any, I don't, I don't know. Going forward, we're trying to make it more desirable, not just crunch.
Yeah, I, I think that when, when the owner wants to renovate the whole space, I think we should put the, you know, pu- give each apartment a, a stack of a washer and dryer. That would be a better solution than, you know, having the tenants have to come down out of their apartment in the future renovations.
Honestly, my, my concern here, it's not the washer and dryer. My concern is here is that, uh, all the boilers and everything are downstairs. So, I just wanna make sure that if there's an emergency, if something goes down, let's just say, I'm sorry, my dogs are going crazy. Shh, girls. Um, if something goes down.
Jack, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, give me a second. So, if something goes down, if something breaks in like the, the water heater or what, my concern is if the tenants are not in the first floor, which they, or wherever the access, ECX is, to get to, to repair anything. I just wanna make sure that the, the boiler, everything else is an easy access for the landlord or whoever later on in the future moves in there. That's my concern here. Um, because if they are on vacation or whatever the case may be, or whatever, I just want to make sure that there's an access port to the boilers and everything.
The, the, the landlord was, was, uh, previously off-site. Now, you know, she was, she handled all repairs and the boilers were always in the bottom floor. Tenants call the landlord and then when there's a repair, she, she sends a maintenance person out there to address those repairs. Now, the landlord is gonna be on the first floor, so it's, it's most, uh, most of the time, she's gonna be easier to access these repairs. Um, when, if, when and if she moves or she rents out the space, the situation that's going on presently will, will remain, will go, you know, re, go back to the way it was, where they call her and she, she gets a maintenance person out there to address those issues.
I understand that, but, but at the current, uh, right now, it's not an actual apartment. In the future, we, we're trying to make this an apartment, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so in the future, I, I don't think it should be like that the, the tenants should be in the, in the same loca- not in the same location, but they should have some type of separation. That's my only concern.
Is she moving to the first floor or the basement?
She's moving into the first floor. It's the ground floor.
That's the basement, Lawrence.
Alright.
The basement. Well, yeah, first floor, yeah.
Cause I know it was two, so I'm thinking first floor, second floor, basement.
Yeah, I, I'm, a lot of, a lot of renters, they always, you know, lock up their boiler space so that the tenants don't have access to it. Because some, you know, sometimes, I mean, in certain areas, I'm, our, our firm is from Newark. In some, certain areas, if you give tenants access to all of the, you know, chemicals of the space, they might wind up missing.
But that's, that's, that's a bit of the problem. So, we're giving that ground floor unit, again, future tenants, we're giving that ground floor unit a hundred percent access to all of the boilers. So, if for any reason they can't get into that unit or they're not providing access, or takes some time to allow access, somebody's sitting without hot water, somebody's sitting without heat. So, I, I, I think that you need to really reconsider how you have it laid out. I don't think you need to move the boilers. I think you could pro- provide access through the back of the house and use that whole little area where you have the kitchen set up as a, a, a space that allows access to that, or a piece of that area at least.
Cause I know most, most of, like, most mechanical spaces are in the basement of, of these two, two, uh, family or three-family houses and they're locked up. So, whenever there's a, a boiler that fails, the, the tenant has to be, you know, called and then they have to get a maintenance person with the key to open up that space to get down to that, that, that plumbing. It, it's, it's, we're not asking for anything, anything different than most uh, two families, three families, four families are, are doing.
Yeah, in essence, if there's an emergency, the landlord has access to any unit, correct?
Yes.
At any time.
At any time, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I think the board should, uh, consider the washers in the other apartment that, um, they almost become a liability for the building when you have a washer up on the other floors. If that leaks or overflows, most of the time, they damage the, uh, the apartments below them. So, I think a lot of, a lot of, a lot of landlords opt out not to have washers in all the apartments for that reason.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think I would agree too.
I, I, I also agree to that. I mean, I don't think it's a necessary thing. Uh, it's, I, as a landlord, I think that's just more of a choice to the landlord. And like Brian said, yes, if you have the, if you have that, you're able to profit more out of the property, but it's not, um, I don't think it's a mandatory.
No, there's no code that says you need to have a washer and dryer in apartment.
Correct.
I didn't stay in the apartment. I just, I, I sat on the ground floor where all of them, I mean, I have a two-family and they're all on the ground floor. And I have two, two rooms.
I guess that's something your, your clients not willing to, to do, to, to put additional washer and dryer on the ground floor for access to the other apartments?
I think if, in the future, if she wants to do another renovation, I'm, I think she could include that, but I, I get it. I think that would be a really benefit for her to do it in the future. She's ready to, you know, get some more bang from her buck for rent. But as presently, she's really just trying to do is, is, is get this basement floor, I mean, this ground floor done and, uh, so that she can live there and retire there.
Going back to what Ms. Guaman said, I understand your predicament about the, um, ballers and everything, but as she stated, it's not like you, you were in keen to say like, most landlords keep the ballers locked up, so we won't have a theft or something like that. But this was unlivable space. You said she hasn't been down in there, anyone has been in there for over twenty years. I think everyone problem is, this is now gonna be a livable space and someone's gonna be living down there. Say if it's not her, twenty years down the line, something goes wrong with the baller, it's another tenant in there. Third floor has no wa- hot water. Three o'clock in the morning, you think they're gonna wanna let someone in to fix their baller?
Yeah, I, I mean, I have, I have a, a property in Trenton and if, if the heat goes out, the tenant calls me, I have to go. I have to be there. I mean, I'm not, I, I mean, and I don't ha- give all the tenants access to my basement because they'd be in and out and I, if something goes missing, I don't know who to, you know, who to blame. So, I lock up my, my space. If she's living in there and she can lock up that boiler so that, you know, she's the only one to access then, then too. Even if somebody, if she rents it to somebody else, she'll have the, a lock on that boiler so that she's the only one that has access to that.
Yeah, but down the line, twenty years later, she doesn't own it anymore. She doesn't own it anymore. The new landlord doesn't live on site like her. What are you gonna do about a situation like that? This is just not for her now. We have to plan ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying, I'm, most, most apartments, I don't, I'm, most apartments, they call the tenant. If there's a, there's a maintenance issue, then the tenant either sends his property manager over there or his maintenance person there to access the space. It's not something that, there's not usually a person that's living there that could fix it immediately. It has to, it's gonna take time for the maintenance person to get there.
No, I understand.
And then open up the space. That, that's the way, I mean, most apartments work. I don't, I, I'm not sure what we're, what you're.
It's still, it's just in a weird spot, the way the, the configuration is laid out. It's kinda strange. I think you could do a lot better with the way everything is laid out to isolate those ballers so anyone can have access without interrupting anyone within the apartment. Just what I think.
Mr. Mr. DiLorenzo, is this something you've seen before? Mr. Mr. Di Lorenzo, is this something you've seen before? Where the boilers are like inside the middle of one apartment, the three-family or four-family?
Yeah, it's, it's usually on the, the outside wall or something.
Right.
Well, it's, I've, I've seen him not a lot, but they're, they're there.
Okay.
I think, I think that they can do it, I think that they can make it work the way it is, but they just got to lose some of that space in the back and it, you know, we're, I, I, I'm not against there being the apartment there, I just, I would like to see it done right, like, you know, if this is something for the long term, I, I, I just feel it should be laid out properly, I mean, it might be a little smaller than she wanted, but I, I prefer that over being done wrong or done awkwardly, or, you know.
Would you like to see, Brian, that the boilers moved?
No, there's, there's access to the building through the back of the house, there's also a stairwell that leads up to each of the other apartments. So all the apartments have access to what would become a small back room, whether it be storage or whether it be wash, a washroom. A, and that room would also grant access to the boiler, so it's not like you'd have to encroach inside of anyone's apartment to, to get into this room. It would be there as kind of communal space, a small communal space, it's not a huge loss of interior space at the apartment. I mean, if we're, we're giving up a garage right now, which is a, a big pieces, a big piece of real estate inside of the house to make a part of this unit. I think giving up part of it in the back isn't, isn't much to ask for and we're not asking to move these boiler units, which I know would be very expensive.
Mr. Watkins, is that something you, you think you could do? I mean, just, great, I guess Mr. Bandit was saying like maybe a corridor? If we.
Yeah, we could do that, but the only problem is now the bedroom that's in the upper left corner would have to go through a corridor, public corridor to get to the bedroom or go through the other bedroom, go through the bathroom to get to the bedroom.
Is there a way to reconfigure that bathroom? Because I know I've been staring at this plan for a while, trying to figure out this.
Well, it's the, we, we, we would, uh, we could eliminate it and that would, you would be able to provide a corridor that would go from the left side of the wall directly through the exterior and go into the boiler room.
What if you don't eliminate it, but you, uh, but you move it to another location? Because I could see the desire to have, you know, at least one and a half baths in an apartment. So you'd say make a corridor to the furnaces.
Well, let's, let's, let's have us take a look at it and I, I think I see a way to do it and I just don't want to, you know, belabor it with everybody and, uh, we just come back again with the plan that provides a separate exterior access to the boilers. That, that's, that's the main issue everybody has, right?
Yes, we'd like to just have public access to the boilers, so in case the tenant on the first floor is away or.
Right.
In your apartment, the landlord, whoever has one key or the other tenant could access that hallway and the boilers can be accessed in an emergency.
Okay, I, I, I see a way to do that, I see a way to do that.
Row, I guess, I don't know if the question's for Rose or, or Mr. Di Lorenzo. Do you see a way that we could approve this and then you finalize the plans with access to that, or you think they should just come back?
Um, they can, you, if you, if the board would like to approve this, uh, application, you can do that, you know, conditioned upon, uh, they, they conform with, you know, the building department, with Tom Harretts, you know, recommendations and, you know, with this, this condition as well.
Hey, you had the site committee, the, the four people committee take a look at it, Ray, once it's, uh, resubmitted? Uh, I, I think so, Brian, are you good with that?
Before we do the resolution.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Before we do the resolution, Frank, we'll have a.
Committee meeting.
Committee meeting?
Yeah, before we come back at the next meeting to, to vote for, for the memorialization.
Gotcha, gotcha, so we could make a motion to approve it with the condition that the architect could draw up a, a, a public corridor to access that and vote before the subcommittee before it becomes memorialized. Is every, all the board members okay with that?
Yes.
I am fine with it.
Hey, Ray, one other thing I need to do is move the, the dump, that dumpster area back a little further, so if there's cars parked in front of it, they can open the doors to get the garbage into the dumpster area, they need to push it back at least the width of the, of the gates.
Mr. Watkins.
Not a problem, we can do that.
Gotcha. All right, um, do we have any, any other board members have any questions? No board members have a question, I'll open it up to the, to the public, is anybody in the public have a, uh, question or comment they'd like to make?
Yes, Ray.
Go ahead, Vic, Mr. Marfucci.
The front where the garage door was, below the windows, what's going to be the finish on the exterior?
Um, siding, vinyl siding.
Okay. And the two parking places on the left, where you're going to pave? They'll be side by side, correct?
Correct.
And.
Hold on, uh, I got another question, you're not changing the siding, are you? Vinyl's not allowed in the district on the front of the house anymore.
Yeah. Okay.
Just, just a heads up.
Mr. Marfucci brings up a good, a good point that I was actually going to reintroduce. Isn't there something better you could do to that garage door to make it, uh, kind of disappear and not highlight it with that vinyl?
Because it would obviously look like a covered up garage door.
You had to match it to brick or, I know it's hard to match brick on a house that's old, but maybe you could do a little something up front, make it look a little better.
Sure, we could do that, we could do that with, uh, different panels.
Yeah, something, I don't know, dress it up a little bit.
No problem.
Okay. Getting back to the.
When you resubmit the plan, there's no, you don't, you're not using vinyl on the front, you could use it on the, the other sides of the house, you just can't use it on the front.
No problem.
Thank you.
Getting back to the new platform for the side-by-side parking, how wide is that area, not the parking spots, the area itself?
It's a little bit over seventeen by twenty.
So you're going to be taking sixteen of the seventeen for parking?
Yeah, to add two additional spaces, and actually, we're going to move it back further so that the gate clears the car. The gate to get into the track.
Somebody who wants to walk from the rear to the front.
There's, there's an existing, there's a sidewalk there now.
But isn't that part of the seventeen feet?
No, the trash.
Yes, it is.
Yes, 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 it is, yeah.
Okay, uh, it's just, it's going to be a tough squeeze to get by if somebody wants to go back there.
There's a space to get through on the other side of the house, right, if you have to walk around?
Gen- general parking requirements are eight by twenty and it's, it's, uh, they make them like that so you can get past the cars and then, and the door can open and it won't hit each other, so there should be enough room for people to walk past.
Okay, and the.
But there is, but there is space on the other side of the property, and are, are you concerned with egress?
Yes.
Yes, there's a space.
Not paved, is it?
That's correct, but there is, there's, there's space.
Okay, and where will the trash area be located?
Behind that additional two-space parking area that we just added. So it'll be further away from Kuzo Street.
So they'd have to get by with the garbage cans also.
Right, and it's going to be enclosed with fence, so it's not.
I mean, to bring it to the street.
Right.
Okay, that was your only comments I had.
Thank you, Vic.
I, I'm sorry, uh, Ray, I have a question, uh, Mr. Marfucci, I just want to just jump on his. To the left of the house, how, God forbid, there's a fire, can the police get back there?
It's five foot four clear of the fence.
On the left or where the cars are going?
If you're, no, if you're looking at the property from Kuzo Street, it's to the right.
Where the cars are going?
No, to the right, the cars are going to the left.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, got you, okay, thank you.
Does anybody else, uh, in the public have any questions or comments? Close the public portion, um, Mr. Mr. Watkins, I guess, uh, my question too is, you looked at Mr. Di Lorenzo and Mr. Harretts' reports with the recommendations, you know, no problem, meaning all their conditions that they outlined?
Correct, no, no, no problem.
Okay. Does anybody else, uh, on the board have a question before we finalize this? If, if no, if no other board member has any questions or comments they'd like to make at this time, gentlemen, is there any summation you'd like to make? Are you guys done with your presentation?
Yes, we're done.
All right, so I think at this time, if, or member, any member would like to make a motion for approval with, uh, the two conditions, the condition one is to, uh, the architects to work out a public corridor to access the boilers and come up with a better siding for the garage doors that Mr. Di Lorenzo, I guess in the subcommittee can agree on, in the acceptance of Mr. Harretts and Mr. Di Lorenzo's reports. Someone like to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bow.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guaman.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Gaians.
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Application has been approved, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Adjournments, we have PB two thousand ten, two, two, four Washington Avenue, block eighty-seven oh one, lot one. Request from the adjournment without further notice until the January fourteenth meeting and the applicant agrees us to spend any and all applicable time limitations for your miserable action for the duration of the adjournment and there will be no further notice and they're scheduled for our next regularly scheduled meeting as January, Corinne, when's our next meeting?
Fourteenth.
January fourteenth meeting. And if no other questions, uh, someone must.
Cutting in, I just want to wish everybody happy holiday.
Thank you, Vic.
I, I have a, I have a request, right?
Go ahead.
Um, and I think this, I don't know, I think this would go to Mr. Di Lorenzo, but is there a way for full transparency, uh, for all of us? Is there a way, uh, Mr. Di Lorenzo, for any two or three family going up that don't go in, that does not need to go in front of zoning or planning? Do you think we can get like a, a monthly update on that? Because, uh, when, when the public and we start and, and we vote on buildings, we talk about schools, we talk about bedrooms, we talk about a whole bunch of stuff. And just so we are on the same page, is there something that you can present or your team could present on once a month planning to say, hey, we have this, we have that, not in detail, not plans or nothing, unless requested, but just as a conversation, is that doable?
What's the purpose for?
Uh, John, like, so when things are going on, like if I'm driving down the streets or something, somebody comes up to me and says, hey, Mr. Graziano, this is going up. Oh, and this way, we're ahead of everything, but not only that, when public come to, uh, school, we get questions, bedrooms, so forth and so on, we have a total picture, right, we're just not honing in on new development outside of, uh, like I said, two and three-family homes that we don't see at the planning board, that's all.
So you're talking about new construction?
Yeah, new construction, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, you've got to talk about news, well, yeah, we can do something like that. I don't think you'd be able to see the plans because we can't give the plans out because they're, you know, for the architect and the owner, so I won't be able to send you the plans, but we can tell you something was built there.
Yeah, and, and if we had questions about it, we can talk, is it legal to talk about stuff like that?
Well, what would the questions be?
Uh, how many bedrooms? How many parking spaces? How many of this, just so, like I said, when, when the, when the public hits, you know, comes to us and.
Public, the, the public would usually call me, but that's not a problem.
Oh, okay, I, I didn't know.
I can, we could get you something like that.
Okay, I, I don't know how the, the rest of you all feel, I just thought it would be nice across the board.
Not a problem.
By two cents.
I mean, I, I like seeing, I like seeing what's going on, what kind of, what's working, what's non-working, I mean, that's a good discussion to always have. Especially, e- even stuff that's going on at the zoning board, if you're seeing a lot of, uh, certain types go across the zoning board stable, meaning maybe we're missing something and something should be changed uh, because it's not working in our ordinances, but, uh, i- it's, it's good to always have an idea of what's happening and where the market's going and what people are doing. I'm not against that idea, I think it's a decent idea to at least provide a report, it doesn't have to be discussed at the meeting with the, uh, uh, every single time, but just, um, if we see something pop up that's, you know, needs to be discussed, we can always discuss it, I'm not against that.
Well, the, the zoning board issues a yearly report on all their, uh, all their applications, so you can see what the trend is or who's asking for variances or use variances and then you can adjust your, your zoning ordinances accordingly.
That's, that's great, I heard of that, but I didn't, I never saw one, so, uh, yeah, that's a good tool too.
Yeah, did, every year they do that, so.
We could see if we could get a copy of last year's report that, uh, Regal probably did it right, Frank, and then, uh.
Yeah, we can get it, yeah.
Yeah, we get it to the board members.
Thank you, yeah, that would be nice.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we close the meeting? I'd just like to, uh, at this time, wish everybody a happy holiday also and thank the members for their hard work. The last few months have been very busy, thank you guys for participating in our special meeting in addition to our regular meetings. And I guess next year looks, uh, exciting also, should be a lot of applications become, uh, coming before us. And it's, looks like the town's headed in the right direction with some of the, with the, you know, some of these developments are definitely improving our town. With that being said, does anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Ray, could I make one more comment, please? I'm sorry, I believe in Silver Lake Zone, the number parking places is per unit, not per bedroom.
Correct, right, Frank, it's, it went from point five to one parking space per unit, it has nothing to do with bedrooms.
After one.
Yes, yes, Vic, you're correct. Someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas, guys.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy New Year.